Call to order, the May 12th, 2014, Latrobe City Council Meeting. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
At this time, I ask that we have a moment of silence to ask for guidance, to give some answers, or to just quietly relax.
Thank you. Roll call, Ms. Buck.
Mr. Divinangelo? Mrs. Smith? Mrs. Caldwell-Cradenner?
Here.
Mr. Scopora?
Here.
Mr. Baldmarry?
Here.
Ms. Beatty?
Here.
Mayor Wolford?
Here.
Mark President.
At this time, I have approval of the minutes from April 14th meeting and the April 28th special meeting.
Madam Mayor, I move that the minutes of the April 14th and 28th, 2014 meetings be approved and accepted and permitted to remain on the secretary's desk, where they will be available for reading and inspection to everyone.
May I have a second, please?
I'll second the motion.
Any questions on the minutes? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. At this time, I have approval of the fiscal department reports and bills and paid bills for the month of April 2014.
Motion to approve.
I'll make that motion.
May I have a second, please?
I have a second now.
Any discussion or questions on the department bills? Or have anything significant to call out in these?
No, I didn't ask my fellow just a moment, but this month, we went ahead and paid the second half of parking rights, $29,000, and the library.
I saw that. Okay. Thank you. All in favor of approving the department reports and paid bills? Aye. Say aye, please.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. At this time, we ask for citizens' requests related to the agenda items only, and we ask that you limit your comments to three or five minutes. Any comments on the agenda items?
James Miller, 127 East Fourth Avenue, Latrobe. On the moment of silence, now that's three boards rule on the matter, do you think it might be a good idea or thought to have a, somebody, a minister or somebody come in and more or less have one person, you know, come one week, month, and then another minister or something the next month, have a prayer before the, you know, or during the council meeting? Also, I see on the agenda that they're going to have an agreement with the Robert Ketterer Charter School. I assume that this is a result of the resource officer and us having to get approval or something. Well, maybe we could explain that a little bit. Also, we're authorizing the solicitor to advertise the no smoking ban in the city parks. We had discussed this about a year ago, but at that time, did we have an ordinance, or was it we just let her put up the signs and let it out to the public? Also, we're going to ratify a memo of understanding for the school resource officer. I have a question about the school resource officer. This is kind of like a special officer. Is any officer on the police force going to be qualified to go up there as a resource officer, or is this a special training type situation? And if this person, for instance, gets hurt or something, could any officer go up there? Would they be qualified to substitute in that position? Also, I'd like to find out how much we've paid so far on the negotiations or lawsuits that are pending between the city and other individuals. Thank you.
Okay. First of all, Mr. Miller, we did pass three years ago an ordinance to post signs called "Young Lungs at Play." But I don't believe we passed a no smoking ordinance in the parks at that time, so we want to do that tonight. Chief, would you address his question on the security resource officer?
The school resource officer is hired for that specific position. He will be, one of the requirements that the school wanted and this state wasn't interested in providing is we need the same person there all the time. They need to establish rapport with the students, they need to be known, they need to develop trust. So, no, our other officers will not go up there. Now, if there's a program that they want somebody to speak in drugs, or somebody to take the canine up, or the canine officer to take the canine up there, or somebody to speak on something else, yes, we would have other officers go up there and do that at the request of the school resource officer. However, the school resource officer will be hired specifically for that position.
If they're hurt, if they're hurt on the job or something when they're not up there, do we have to, and let's say they're permanently disabled, do we have to hire a new resource officer at that point?
Yes.
Okay.
And also, I lost my train of thought there.
I'm sorry.
Okay.
Thank you.
Did you, could you also address the, or Mr. Kelly, maybe one of you two, his other question on the Robert Ketterer Charter School?
That's basically the agreement that Mr. Kelly spoke about last week, month, or was it the agenda meeting, Mr. Kelly?
It's a mutu aid agreement?
Yes, it's a mutu aid agreement that's required by the school district or Department of Education through the school district that we need, or vice versa, that we need to sign with, and it's the Adelphi, or there's not the.
Technically, it's called a first responder agreement, and as Mr. Boomer indicated, the Department of Education requires this, that every school district have a first responder agreement with the police that serves the jurisdictions where the buildings are. In U of D Township, they already have one with the Pennsylvania State Police. This first responder agreement for Adelphi, for example, is for the school that is located within the city's limits. And basically, it just provides different requirements and obligations if there is an incident and what each party would do.
Any other citizens' requests or comments? Did I forget something, Jim? Oh.
You have the lawsuits or negotiations, whatever they are?
I don't know that we've approved anymore since last time. Is it $15,000?
It's close to $12,000.
$12,000.
How much is paid?
Yeah.
$11,896.78.
Any other comments from the citizens with regards to items on the agenda? Committee reports, finance, Mike? Anything to report?
Nothing to report for this month.
Public safety, Jerry or Julie?
Just that we, like everybody that comes to meeting next Monday at 6:30 for the Neighborhood Watch, bring your friends, bring your neighbors, we'd like to get this thing kicked off and spread the word.
Personnel committee, Tricia, Mike?
Nothing to report, except we do have some ongoing issues with one of the labor bodies here at the city. We're working that up.
Public works, Jerry, sounds on here?
We're waiting for the bids come in on the street paving, and then we're going to get into the transfer station, the business plan for the transfer station.
Community development, Julie?
Nothing to report this month.
No, we're just going to meet with Ms. Powell soon, so she can go over the code enforcement.
Any more than authority reports? I don't think too many here. Department reports, Joe?
As Mr. Baldmarry stated, we were waiting for some cost estimates to come in from Gibson Thomas. I provided a list of streets more than we could ever possibly pave. It's not that hard getting a long list. What we are going to do as a committee then, Mayor, is work on that list and find out where our money is best well-spent. Gibson Thomas has that. I should be getting those cost estimates back in another couple days, and I would like Jerry, our committee, to be able to have something prepared for the agenda session. And that's all. Thank you.
Thanks, Joe. Chief?
Saturday, we had the physical agility test for the school resource officer. Eight candidates, 10 candidates actually applied, eight chose over for the test, seven passed the physical agility test, so we're giving the written test this coming Saturday. So that's moving all cylinders. Also, would like to let council know in the public that Joe Bush, myself, and me doing with the Parking Authority, we have planned to address some of the problems, most specifically some of the illegal spaces that are metered that are against regulations of the vehicle code. We have to address that, and there's some other problems we want to talk to the Parking Authority about. We also have a new employee who is meter attendant. She's Marsha, and she's doing a very good job. The girls in the office really came together and helped show her the ropes, train her. Really proud of the group, and she's doing a great job. Another thing is the Neighborhood Watch Jerry talked about. We have to stress that this is the community's project, but the police will be here to set some guidelines and do some assistance, so we do need some attendance at that meeting. Another thing I'd like council to entertain is the no smoking ban. I personally despise smoking and don't like to be around it, and I think it's a terrible health hazard. However, do you want your resources as the police to be responding to people calling the police on people smoking in parks? I think that it's nonsensical, and I think the ordinance will have very little teeth to enforce.
I have a question for you, Jim. If there's an ordinance there and in the regular rounds of doing their job, they see something like that, doesn't that then give them some teeth? I'm not saying that people are going to call every time they see somebody, but I'm looking at it as like, you know, in their regular rounds, if they see someone smoking at the park, they could then say to them, you know, does that help them in any way?
Well, what's going to happen is they're going to challenge the police officer and say, "You can't tell, I can smoke." And if you cite them, I personally, and this is my opinion, can't see it going through the magistrate.
Even if there's a, even if there's a sign that says no smoking?
I think that, and I would have to talk to Mr. Kelly further on it, or Mr. Kelly could give his opinion on this, but I do feel that it's going to be difficult to enforce. I can just see the concern while they're not on a playground with her kid, and somebody lights up a cigarette, and she calls the police, and we're running down there. I mean, that's, it's just, it's just really, really going to be tough.
Don't you think it might just, I mean, don't you think it could deter people just because it says that? I mean, just because there are, you know, smoking prohibited signs, that it would deter some people that have some respect?
What's going to happen when the lady calls the police and demands he be arrested, demands he be cited for that ordinance, because it says so right there? I mean.
I don't think the ordinance is written that they get arrested. I don't know.
Well, then why do you have an ordinance? If you violated an ordinance, you should get a citation.
Yeah, you should. We have a lot of ordinance, isn't there?
I mean, that's what I'm talking about. You got two guys on a 3:11 shift on a June evening, and you're running call, or call, or call. You want to be running back and forth to the playgrounds because so-and-so smoking. I just think it's, really needs to be looked at a little closer than to jump into an ordinance like that. If Mr. Kelly would be so kind to give any kind of input about the strength of the ordinance, I would appreciate it.
Do you have an opinion?
I always have an opinion.
No, I think it can be made with teeth. The problem's going to be, if somebody sees somebody smoking and they're aware that the police, the perpetrators are aware, police have been called, they're probably going to stop. So now the question is, is the person who called going to testify, are they going to be willing to go out to Mike Mahadie's? I don't know the answer to those things. But we can put teeth into it. If it appears as though we are expending a substantial amount of our police time with very little results, then we can always repeal the ordinance. I don't know. I understand Mr. Boomer's concern.
So do I.
It is going to be a tough, and there's going to be a lot of resistance probably, but in the world.
Chief Brisley's not here. Ann?
I have no report.
Okay. We'll move on to the agenda items. Mr. Kelly?
Madam Mayor, members of council, the first item appears under the Administration Finance Department. It is a simple motion, and it reads, "I move we authorize the Director of Administration Finance to sign any and all documents necessary to renew the automated clearinghouse origination agreement with Commercial Bank and Trust of Pennsylvania." And if anyone has questions, I would ask you please address it to Ms. Buck, because she knows much more about this than I do.
Before I ask for a motion, can she explain it to us?
Yeah.
This is just something that we were due every 70 years, and it just happened to come up right now. And what it does is it allows us to use an online service with the bank for our direct deposit or payable.
Mr. Kelly, you said that's a motion, simple motion. Okay, may I have a motion, please?
I'll make that motion.
And may I have a second?
And I'll second.
Any questions or discussions? All in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
The next item on the agenda is also under the Administration Finance Department, and quite honestly, is something that I ask be put on the agenda. Until such time as we hire a new city manager, I feel it would not be a good idea to have anyone raise a question about any of the things that are going to be signed, I mean outside parts. So that, what I have is a resolution that I'll read in a moment, and it basically authorizes the department heads to sign documents from their departments. Obviously, the mayor would still continue to sign any documents that she has signed in the past, and that way, there could be no questions to their authority. The resolution reads, "Designate temporary signatories in the absence of the city manager. Now therefore be resolved, Section 1, that the mayor of the city of Latrobe shall continue to sign all documents properly brought before her for signature. Section 2, the council of the city of Latrobe hereby establishes the following individuals to sign documents normally signed by the city manager until his replacement is hired the signatories are, and for those matters that are properly included under the Administration Finance Department, the signatory shall be Barbara J. Bach, Director of Administration Finance. For those matters properly included under the police department, the signatory shall be James Boomer, Chief of Police. For those matters that are properly included under the Public Works Department, the signatory shall be Joseph Bush, Director of Public Works. And for those matters properly included under the Fire Department, the signatory will be John Brisley, fired Department Director. For any matter not included in any of the above departments, the signatory shall be Barbara J. Bach, Director of Administration Finance. That the council of the city of Latrobe ratifies and affirms the signing of any document normally executed by the city manager by any department and subsequent to the departure of the city manager on April 30th, 2014. Section 4, that upon the hiring of the new city manager, the authorization above set forth shall cease and terminate on the first day of his or her employment. That this resolution shall take effect immediately, resolved in council this date. The motion will be to adopt the resolution as outlined."
May I have a motion, please, to adopt the resolution?
I'll make the motion.
Second, anyone?
I'll second.
Any questions? Ms. Buck?
This is Resolution 2014-28. Ms. Beatty?
Yes.
Mr. Scopora?
Yes.
Mrs. Caldwell-Cradenner?
Yes.
Mr. Baldmarry?
Yes.
Mayor Wolford?
Yes.
Madam Spade, yes.
The next item on the agenda appears under the police department, and it is also a resolution authorizing an agreement between the Robert Ketterer Charter School and the Latrobe Police Department. This is for the first responder agreement that we discussed a bit earlier with Mr. Miller. The resolution reads as follows, "Approving entering into a memorandum of understanding between the city of Latrobe Police Department and Dr. Robert Ketterer Charter School, whereas pursuant to the provisions of the Pennsylvania School Code, the Charter School and those local enforcement agencies providing service to various schools are required to develop memorandum of understanding which sets forth procedures to be followed when an incident involving an act of violence or possession of a weapon by any person occurs on school property, whereas the city of Latrobe now desires to enter into such a memorandum of understanding with the Dr. Robert Ketterer Charter School facility located at 1135 Village Way Avenue, Latrobe. Now therefore be resolved, Section 1, that the council of the city of Latrobe does hereby approve entering into a memorandum of understanding attached here to Exhibit A with the Dr. Robert Ketterer Charter School. Section 2, that the mayor, city secretary, and any of the proper city officer are hereby authorized and directed to execute the attached memorandum of understanding, buying on behalf of the city of Latrobe and to take any and all action necessary to carry into effect the memorandum of understanding and this resolution, approving the same, resolved in council this date. I might add to council that there is a minor, very minor change on the agreement. There was some language left off, and I contacted Mr. Gregory. That's found on Item 3E. It says where there are discrepancies between the school entity's incident data and the police incident data, the following shall occur. Very simple sentence, incident reports following a report of incident will be reviewed by the responding police officer and the school administrator to resolve any discrepancies which may be done within 48 hours after the incident.
Where are you reading from? We're very bad with my reading.
I have to.
Oh, yeah, I was trying to find. There's a lot of 3Es.
So, I'm sorry, seven, I'll get to the page eight, be the 10th page.
It would be the page before the signature page, that's the easiest way to say.
Okay, and it's.
8, if you see paragraph 3E.
On page 10? No, there's no.
There's got to be on page 11, you know what, maybe it is in the old one. No, it's not.
What I just read to is not there, that's why I'm pointing it out.
There's a bunch of lines describing.
Yes, yes, that.
You following for the resolution?
Mm-hmm.
He brought his new one tonight.
Okay.
Everybody wants to see.
You're okay with it?
Oh, yeah.
No, there's no problem.
Okay, may I have a? May I have a motion to adopt the resolution?
I'll make that motion.
Second, please?
I'll second.
Any questions or discussion? Ms. Buck?
This is Resolution 2014-29. Mrs. Caldwell-Cradenner?
Yes.
Mr. Baldmarry?
Yes.
Ms. Beatty?
Yes.
Mr. Scopora?
Yes.
Mayor Wolford?
Yes.
Madam Spade, yes.
The next item on the agenda is the authorize solicitor to advertise an ordinance to ban smoking in city parks.
And at the moment, that's a simple motion, Madam Mayor, just a motion.
Okay. Oh, we're just going to advertise the ordinance. Do we want to table this and talk about it in the agenda session, or do I have a motion?
I'd like to make the motion that we table this item and.
There's nothing, nothing really to table at this point. We haven't made a motion to authorize me to do.
I'd like to see this, I guess, taken from the agenda then, for this month. I make a motion that we remove this from the agenda for this month? I'll second it.
Any questions or discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, next item. Mr. Kelly? We can put this on the agenda to talk about, pardon, the agenda perhaps.
The next item, Madam Mayor, members of council, falls under the police department, and it is a resolution. The resolution reads as follows, "Approving the signing of a memorandum of agreement between the city of Latrobe and the Latrobe Police Department Collective Bargaining Unit, whereas the city of Latrobe and the Latrobe Police Department are parties to a collective bargaining agreement currently in force, whereas the city has created a position identified as school resource officer, whereas the position of school resource officer is part of the department, whereas the city and the department recognize that the position of school resource officer is a member of the police union for collective bargaining purposes, whereas the city and the department meant to discuss the inclusion of the school resource officer position in the union bargaining unit, and an agreement was reached between the city and the Latrobe Police Department Collective Bargaining Unit. Now therefore be resolved, Section 1, that the council of the city of Latrobe does hereby approve a memorandum of agreement between the city and the Latrobe Police Department Collective Bargaining Unit in the form attached here to Exhibit A. In Section 2, that the mayor, city secretary, and any other designated city officer are hereby authorized and directed to sign the within memorandum of understanding and take any and all action necessary to carry into effect the within resolution and the provisions of the memorandum of understanding attached here to, resolved in council this date. The motion will be to adopt the resolution as outlined."
May I have a motion to adopt the resolution?
So do the Madam Mayor.
May I have a second?
I'll second.
Any questions or discussions?
I do have a question. I see here, we do have a, an approved agreement with the FOP and also the blessing of the chief on this MOU, right?
Yes.
So everything is good to go with this memorandum of understanding?
We had some discussion this week. We had our knob, knob between the FOP, and we came to an agreement.
I see signatures on here, according to council, just saying that we're not doing this without their.
No, they're.
Well, there's been discussion with them, and then again, it's a memorandum of understanding, so both parties have been.
There was two points on the agreement we had discussed, and our knob, it's been taken care of.
Thank you.
And I believe there was a, we were cut up against the timeline because the school district, I think, had a.
There was a petition presented this past Friday under the Pennsylvania School Code to hire the SRO, the school resource officer, as a school police officer. They are different functions. The resource officer is an educator, the police officer is a police officer.
Right.
But under the provisions of the school code, this can occur. And so, we wanted to have everything signed and in order prior to Mr. Nichols, their solicitor, presenting his petition on Friday. But that petition was presented, the court has signed the order, and we're moving forward. So in effect, we are ratifying the signatures of the city on that document.
Any other questions?
So is he a police officer or? Both?
Yes, he's both. When he's not being a school resource officer, he'll be a police officer.
Not up there.
Well, he functions.
He don't have the school.
Yes.
At any school within the school district? He is.
Yes.
Both.
Yes.
Just think of it as which has he worked. I mean, quite honestly, he's probably not going to be a police officer unless something drastic has happened, something bad. But his primary function is to be an educator, a teacher, to work with the kids and have them gain a greater appreciation of a policeman in a police department.
Jim, can I ask you a question about, so during the school week?
So during the school week, if he... If school's canceled, it says in here that he'd work like the 7 to 3 shift. And that's because you wouldn't want to come on another shift because he'll probably have to work the next day at the school, correct?
That's correct. There may be some contractual issues there too that we wouldn't want to cross. So if he's on the daylight shift at the school, he's on the daylight shift there working.
And then during the summer, that would rotate, it says?
Yeah, he would be in... He would drop right into rotation, just like a officer that has the least amount of seniority. He would go through the procedure how we feel is good.
And how would that work on Christmas break? It's a longer time. Would it still be the 7 to 3 shift, or you would...
It just depends. We can do what we want with him, just so the bargaining unit agrees with it, and I can't see a problem. If there's a problem across that bridge and we come to it, it wouldn't be something we can't work out.
Any other questions? Ms. Buck?
This is Resolution 2014-30. Mr. Baldmarry?
Yes.
Mrs. Caldwell-Crayton?
Yes.
Ms. Beatty?
Yes.
Mr. Scopor?
Yes.
Mayor Wolford?
Yes.
That is five yes.
Madam Mayor, Members of Council, the last item on the agenda under the departments is the Public Works Department, and it is a simple motion, and the motion is to authorize the Director of Public Works to advertise forbids for the 2014 street paving program. From what Mr. Baldmarry said, it sounds as though we may have already done that?
No.
Nope? Okay. Then that's what we're doing. We're authorizing him to...
It's a motion.
Just a simple motion, yes.
May I have a motion, please?
I'll make that motion.
Second?
I'll second it.
Any questions or discussion at this point? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Carries unanimously. That's it for the agenda items.
That's it.
Unfinished business. Does council have any unfinished business items?
I'd just like to give a report. We had a RCAP meeting, unless you were going to?
I was, but you can do it.
Well, that's fine. If you're going to take care of it.
No, that's okay. Go ahead. I have your stuff.
We had a good meeting the other day on the RCAP, and there were a few areas that needed to be caught up on, on the city's end line with Mr. Kelly.
Already?
Already done.
And the other one, the parking authority solicitor had to provide something.
Got that.
And we had the due payment request from the city, and that's taken care of on our end. The other thing, or the other issues that are out there are not in our control, but in our direction. The contractors need to be more defined in the way they're presenting some of their payroll information and their steel certs and have an episode explained to the contract, to the general contractor at that meeting. And other than that, we're flowing through and going on with the process as it should be presumed.
Yeah, I'll just add to that. I think the key is, you know, we need to get the information from the contractor, and we are... We had them on a conference call on Wednesday and gave them, I think, probably a two-week deadline to get everything to us, is what we told them. Have you heard anything from them?
What they did was that Brian Flippers sent an email to all of their subcontractors and sent that same Excel spreadsheet that Brad had here to them. And some of the responses, these people are confused now as to what they need. So Brian's just kind of sending it back to me, and I'm going to try and work from there with them.
We have a June 9 deadline, so...
The June 9 deadline is to get all of the special conditions back.
Right.
And to get that payment request. So those are my two main things.
And you need some of this information in order to do that? Some of it?
Yeah, not so much. The one thing was the solicitor's opinion as far as the payroll certs, you know, with the...
We have time for this.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, yeah, there's still some work to be done, but I think, I mean, we're optimistic that we're going to get there.
And it should be noted that these contractors have been asked this several times. For a while, they've been asked to provide this information.
I think the main contractors. I think the main contractors would want...
The subcontractors?
Carl Walker subcontractors. Now, we have the main ones besides Carl Walker, like Meshan, Marshall, the elevator, the others. Those ones, most of them are in compliance. It's those other subcontractors.
It's the subcontractors of Carl Walker?
Correct.
Yeah.
They were asked before.
Yeah, they were.
They have been asked.
Provided before, yes. They were asked to provide this before. They're still being asked.
Actually...
Provided.
Like, I think it was Carl Walker's told they needed to get them, because they were their subcontractors, and now it sounds like they're just kind of passing the buck. But it's complicated. It's not easy. Anything else, Mike?
No.
Anyone else? I have a couple of comments. Jerry attended. Jerry, we had some things going on this month that I felt needed someone's attention in the absence of our city manager. Jerry was gracious enough to go to the DCED, take a day vacation today and go to the DCED meeting at IUP. And Jerry, did you have anything you wanted to share with the group?
Not right now.
Think about it?
Been a long one.
Yeah, it was just today, so he's been having a long day. And there's another event. There's an organization called Building One. It's a new group that's formed recently. They're having their first forum, I think it's their first, but on May 16. I'm trying to find someone that may be able to go to that. Ann's going to check her schedule and see if she can go. It's a lot of different municipalities about, you know, in Pennsylvania, southwestern Pennsylvania, they get together, they meet, they talk about their sustainability issues, share ideas and concerns about some of the problems they're facing. I think it sounds like a good organization to get in on the ground floor as they're getting off the ground. So we're going to hopefully, Ann, will be able to make it into her schedule. So there's a lot going on. That's it for me for unfinished business. Anybody else? Okay, this time, under new business, we have... We'd like to recognize some of our employees, and we have an employee recognition and award ceremony. And then after the meeting, we ask that you all stick around, congratulate our employees that have had long years of service with us, and enjoy some cake. At this time, I would ask the... Ask John Sleisman to come forward, please. Karen Maholick and Jeffrey Ragula. In recognition for 20 years of excellent service as an administration firm with the city of Latrobe Administration Department, Karen Maholick was hired on October 24, 1994. The city of Latrobe would like to extend sincere appreciation to Karen for her many years of professional, highly motivated, and exceptional service to this community. Thank you very much, Karen.
In recognition for 25... 20 years, sorry. In recognition for 20 years of outstanding service as a police officer and police detective, John W. Sleisman was hired on September 26, 1994, and promoted to police detective on October 4, 2010. The city of Latrobe would like to extend our appreciation and recognition to Detective Sleisman for his loyalty, selfless bravery, and honorable service to the community. Congratulations.
Sergeant Jeffrey Ragula?
Yeah.
We went to grade school together.
So we're both...
In recognition for 25 years of outstanding service as a police officer and police sergeant for the Latrobe Police Department, Jeffrey J. Ragula was hired as an officer on March 20, 1989, and promoted to sergeant on September 11, 1995. The city of Latrobe would like to express sincere gratitude to Sergeant Jeffrey J. Ragula for his dedication, bravery, and honorable service to this community.
Thank you. Good luck. A couple other items I would like to note under employee recognition. I'd like to welcome Marcia Matter from... Who was just hired this month, our meter maid that Chief Boomer mentioned a little bit earlier. Marcia, welcome to the crowd.
Thank you.
Also, I'd like to make a notation of thanks to Ann Pow, who has worked with Peoples Natural Gas, and they have agreed to pay $25,000 to the city to help defray the cost for restoration of Grant Street from Ligonier to Harrison Avenue. Also, Ann is spearheading a rain barrel program this summer and received $2,391 for a project titled Pet Waste Stations and Rain Barrels.
It's going to be fun.
Sounds like it. Thank you, Ann. Congratulations on this success. At this time, we have our open forum. Just citizens would like to come to the podium and talk about anything that's on their mind. Please do. Joe, I thought you were going to say something.
I thought it was a job to do. Jake Miller, 127 East Fourth Avenue. I'd like to know what's going on with the Eagles building. Is there... I don't see anybody working down there. It's still in progress, or do they have any legal problems or something?
Ann, can you address that?
I know that Ramondo was on vacation last week. He wasn't even in the state. There's a meeting tomorrow with the Eagles and their attorney. The preliminary schedule I received was that they'll be done with all three sides by July 1. But when we meet tomorrow, I'm going to try to get them to speed it up a little more. I know that Mr. Ramondo was sick as well for a while, but I'll find out tomorrow.
One other thing. I think the council made a wrong decision on the department heads authorizing payments sent out there. I think that they should have had two signatures on any authorization for payment or something like that.
It's not paychecks.
We do still require two signatures on all checks.
Yes.
One appointed, one elected.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Yes. It's just... I don't know if you can give them some examples, Barb, like receipt of stuff that comes in, or... Barb, you give some examples might help.
Yeah. Because I even put on here, there's municipal leads that we handled in our office that the city manager would sign off on. Invoices that we send out to other people. A lot of places don't even require a signature on them, but we do here. And all the time in the past, city manager always signed them. But it's us getting paid from somebody, from those invoices. You know, the dating mail that comes in is date stamped, and then a signature is just marked on it showing that we did get an invoice, not for as far as payment. But checks do require, you know, one elected, one appointed, which would either be the mayor or deputy mayor, and myself and two of the city managers, you know, placed.
You're welcome. Anything else for the good of the order? Anyone else have anything? I want to encourage everyone to please attend the meeting on Monday, May 19, for the Neighborhood Watch Program. Unfortunately, I'm committed to something else that day, so I won't be there, but I wholeheartedly support this and plan to, you know, get on board as soon as my schedule permits, and will be as big of a part of it as I can be and as you guys want me to be, but congratulations on getting this far. And just to invite everyone to stick around and have cake and celebrate with us, with our employees and their years of service. Anyone have anything else? I ask for a motion to adjourn?
So do I.
Second, please?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.